Okay. Good evening and welcome to the December 5th, 2016 School Committee Meeting. I will call the meeting to order at 7:00. If we could, is there anyone else? LCAD is audio and videotaping. Is anyone else doing either? Okay, thank you. You please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, starting to my left.
Gregory Thompson.
Georgie Mayu.
Rich Ficchero.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marcy Boucher.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Salavi, Recording Secretary.
Okay. Moving along to item two, Approval of Minutes. 2.1, Approval of the November 7th, 2016 Executive Session Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on those? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Item 2.2, Approval of the November 7th, 2016 Regular Session Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion on those? All in favor? Aye. Could you oppose?
And I'll abstain again, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Item three, Subcommittee/Subcommittee Communications. Greg.
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
Yep, I just want to mention that last week I made it to the high school winter concert, and again, another fantastic show. I will always say it's the best entertainment you can get for $5. And I really have to say what an incredible evening it was where they showcased some of the students and their talents. Some of them playing piano while the chorus sang, and that they're just multi-talented, which is pretty incredible to just see all the students perform that night. And the end was great. They had a standing ovation at the end, too. They had the chorus play while the chorus sang the song. They did like a winter holiday medley of songs. And again, I was just, every year, I'm just blown away by the talent that comes from the students at the concert.
Okay. Rich.
Two quick items. The Tended National Society, Bill here, was very impressive, as always. And secondly, the Eastmore High School Hall of Fame had their annual banquet on the 19th. I think there were 11 athletes inducted, and the, in the 1969-70 track team. So it was kind of the group. And Mrs. Smith, I'll update you on the Election Committee, which we also had a meeting on on 7.5.
Okay, thank you. Beth?
And I just wanted to say that ELEAF is going to have their annual dinner event on February 11th. It will be at Twin Hills.
That's early, isn't it? It's in March.
Last year was a little bit late, but anyways, they're not doing the traditional auction they've done. They're, I don't know, coming up with some other ideas. But that is, that, I think it's, Burchill and I think Scotty Conner are coming up on Wednesday night.
It's Wednesday night.
Yep.
Tomorrow night.
It'll be Monday.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think it's going to be a ball theme, like a winter ball.
Valentine's Day ball.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Congratulations, as Rich said, congratulations to our new inductees into the National Honor Society. And I also took the opportunity with Mr. Smith to go over to Maple Shade to see the breakfast program and how it was distributed and how everything was going. It's running very smooth. The kids love it, the staff has bought into it. And it was, it was a pleasure to see, Lori Paul was there, she actually has an intern, a dietitian from UMass, that's working with her until like, I think, February. So they're putting together all these programs, they're going to start talking to the students. And it was, it actually was very well run. And I just wanted, I wanted to see it, I wanted to give them some time to work the bugs out, but they're doing a great job over there.
Look, Lori Paul and her staff are doing an exceptional job. The, as Mr. Fonseca was saying, the neat element here with a student intern is they're looking at how different foods, from a nutritional standpoint, play off each other, and which maybe unleashes more nutrients and works better for students at the beginning of the day. So that's sort of an added bonus.
It was. It was a good thing. Okay. Item four, Opportunities. There's no visitors, so we will move right into item five, Presentations. Superintendent's Report, so we will go to item 5.2.1, Assistant Superintendent for Business Report. Go ahead, Pam.
In your package, you have a letter here from Principal Mr. Michael Fedett from Maple Shade. He would like the School Committee to accept a $1,000 check from Raytheon. And we would like to say kudos here to, and a little shout out to Daniel Larkin. Mrs. Daniel Larkin, she's a Maple Shade 4th grade teacher, and she received this award as a finalist of five for the Massachusetts STEM Teacher of the Year Award. And for her hard work, this $1,000 was given to the school on her behalf. So again, thank you and congratulations, Mrs. Larkin.
Yes. That's really nice.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept the donation?
We accept the $1,000 gift?
Gift. It is a gift, yes.
From Raytheon, in regards to Mrs. Larkin's being one of the finalists for the STEM Teacher of the Year.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, humorous thought. I'm just very impressed with Michael Fedett's letter and his article and his heading here compared to Raytheon. Raytheon, the letter looks so bland, doesn't it? Compared to Michael Fedett's letter?
Yeah.
You know, it's a corporate office, meanwhile. But so, kudos to the way Mike Fedett presented this in his letter.
And congratulations to that, too. I know they've really been trying to do a lot, yeah, at Maple Shade.
She is, I hear wonderful things.
Yeah.
And lastly, I forgot to mention that that money is earmarked for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that vote is unanimous.
Okay, that's a positive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving along to item seven, New Business. Item 7.1.
Before you do New Business, I didn't know if you wanted to get a student.
Oh, you should have given him a commitment. Stealth off.
Yeah. Yevi, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, yeah. Last Wednesday, we had a winter concert at the high school, where we had all the schools' music clubs, like Acapella's, Julie Nodin, the band's chorus and band. We all performed, it was really, it went really well, we had a good turnout. And we also have midterms coming up on the 12th for Term Two. So semester's wrapping up now, and we're having senior projects being presented on the 9th and the 16th. So this Friday and next week. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into New Business. Item 7.1, Mountain View 4th Grade Field Trip to the Connecticut Science Center in Hartford.
Okay. In your package, you'll see a letter from Mrs. Antonella, Principal of Mountain View, to me. It's outlining the 4th grade field trip that's coming up in March. Approximately 100 students will be going, 16 adults, and the PTO does help subsidize the cost. So students will be paying approximately $10 each for the cost of this trip to the Connecticut Science Center.
So this is the complete 4th grade, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wonder, we accept the Mountain View 4th Grade Field Trip request for the Connecticut Science in Connecticut, March 17th, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. 7.2, Budget Development Timeline for Fiscal Year 2018.
Okay. Thank you. In your package, you have an outline similar to years past. The one element that I will emphasize as we go through this is that it is subject to change. We know that we're not only in a new form of government this year, but somewhat of a new budget process. And so, our new town manager, Mrs. Menard, probably will be updating all departments with a timeline soon. We have not received that timeline, so possibly some of these dates get moved out, which may be helpful to everyone.
I heard that from one of the town council members that they didn't feel the need to rush because there's no, quote, "town meeting" in May.
Correct.
That there can be a little more flexibility in going through the budget.
Correct. And so, we hope that that is both for discussions, as well as for Mrs. Blair's sake, for even preliminary budget. What you have in front of you is more or less the timeline that we've seen in the last three years. So, at the moment, we're prepared to possibly submit a preliminary budget to the town manager on January 13th, and then, as we've done in years past, start all the different budget discussions with the town. The hope might be that that's knocked out a little bit further, just as you were saying, Mr. Ficchero. One of the items that comes out in late January is the governor's budget, and it could give us an idea as to at least where the state might be thinking, and which would help all of us set our budgets. So, this is an outline of meetings and the timeline geared around the past few years. You see where leadership team meetings, we started with one last week on November 29th. We are changing the December 6th, and we're going to move that out to December 13th, given that at the moment, we don't have much specific information from the town. So, our leadership team knows what we feel the outline will be, and they know what our budget request sheet looks like. We revamped it a little bit, but it will accumulate all the requests into that spreadsheet that you've seen in years past. And then we'll be able to discuss it and start to look at how hopefully we can meet some of the challenges, either within budget increase that may be coming forward for next year, or is there a way to reallocate within our current budget and next year's budget to things that maybe are no longer being utilized the way they have in the past, and supporting students the way they have in the past? Is there a way to then start to utilize it in other areas? So that's been the charge, that's what we discussed on the 29th. And then on the 13th, we'll start to look at, as a leadership team, budget requests and thoughts around that. What they are doing in their buildings, mostly in the month of September, excuse me, December, is using meeting time to start to talk about the budget process and getting departmental requests, as well as making sure that their school councils know what priorities may, and what challenges may exist for each building, so that the school councils can also get into that discussion and look at what the needs are for each given school. That takes us into January. We're at, if we look at the second page, we're at the December 5th meeting, talking about the overview of the budget. We, hopefully, will be able to look at preliminary budget information at our December 19th meeting. And then, if we stay on a very tight timeline of years past, we would use a January 9th meeting to finalize at least a preliminary budget. The hope would be that maybe that's pushed out a bit, and maybe second meeting in January, we can look at, again, more information around the budget and have something that, from the state, which may be helpful for us.
It sounds like the key word is tentative.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is the key word.
Well, I think with Denise Menard just being, you know, appointed in her position, and, you know, congratulations to her, that now it's going to be a little bit of a work in progress as far as the budget timeline goes.
Especially for this year.
Yeah.
Well, in prior years, we've worked actively with the Appropriations Committee, no longer in existence. So, who are we going to be receiving parameters from, as we have in the past?
Town manager.
Town manager.
A manager will have us parameters, and then it's, our budget will be subject to approval of the council, the correct council.
Our budget.
Not to the town manager.
Our budget actually gets presented to the town manager.
We submit, we do submit it to town manager.
Subject to approval of the town manager.
No. She presents it to the council.
Presents it to the council.
Okay. So it's subject to approval.
It's going to be part of the entire town budget that goes to the council.
And I'm sure that, you know, we'll have conversations supporting our budget.
Right.
As we have in the past.
Right.
It's just a different process of submitting it this year. Okay. Greg?
So, we hadn't set any firm dates prior to the interviews that went on last week. So hoping this week, we can start to set some firm dates with, when would you like to discuss acts on the budget, budget process around the school department's budget, and then start to outline some things which I can pass along to all of you.
Great.
Okay.
Great.
Anyone else?
And then similar to the capital.
Same, same type. They have our capital plan. My understanding is they're going to start to put together a group that might advise the town manager on that capital plan, because she will be responsible for bringing some type of capital plan forward to the town council as a whole.
The council will create a group? Is that what you mean by "they"? A working group?
I think they, the council had already recommended a working group around debt. It was my understanding in talking with the town manager that someone such as Tom O'Connor, former capital chair, capital committee chair, might also be part of that advisory group, and might help in some of those meetings as we go over projects.
Okay. But again, I think we'll be involved in those discussions as well to present, because they haven't asked us for any sort of prioritization yet or anything. So, at that point, I think, you know, we'll probably be invited in to talk about our capital plan, or potential, or, you know, whatever, what our needs are going to be.
And does the charter outline the date where the council is set to approve?
No.
The budget and the.
Budget has to be.
March 1st.
Well, it has to be, yeah.
Has to be approved by the council. Okay. Cool.
Nice. Thank you. Okay. Moving along to item 7.3, The Start and End Dates for the 2017-2018 Calendar, School Calendar.
Okay. Similar to past years, we want to at least publish the draft of our school calendar, which gives the start date for the school year and the end date of the school year, as well as vacations, so that parents can plan somewhat for the next school year. And then, what we will do over the next few months is, although we do have one Professional Development Day in there, which is the November Election Day, we've decided that that is a good one just to keep, because it allows most school systems, really throughout the state, have that as a Professional Development Day. Locally, what it allows us to do is work with local school systems and our collaborative. Should a program be offered, last year, they were doing some work around science, and that, you could release and send your science teachers over to the collaborative to work with local school systems, science teachers, and start to really cross district lines and help each other do a better job at not only recognizing best practice, but maybe more efficient ways of, if you're thinking science, one of the discussions we've had around science, efficient ways of acquiring materials for science, which generally are consumable, that type of thing. And so, the November Professional Development Day is in there, as well as the vacations.
Mrs. Smith, school commissioner, so this is developed with the collaborative committee.
Yes.
So, a lot of work goes into this.
I know.
Just the one thing that, did you verify the November 10th is the day that the state's recognizing Veterans Day?
The town hall is recognizing Veterans Day on the 10th.
That was the question we had, okay.
And then, what's the May 28th? What is that?
Memorial Day, 28th.
Okay. It's just not listed, so.
Yes, all right.
We'll put that in.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
I make a mo, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Rich.
I make a motion to accept the beginning date and end date of the 2017-2018 School Calendar.
Want to specify what those dates are?
Okay. So, but the first day for students would be August 29th, a Tuesday, and the last day would be Wednesday, June 13th. Depending on snow days, it could go as far as June 20th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Moving along to 7.4, School Committee Stipend. This is something that I kind of thought about and decided to bring up after talking to all of you. We can't find any information as to the last time our stipend was even addressed. I know in my time on the committee, it hasn't been addressed or, or anything. So I figured, just bring it up and have a discussion. I mean, this is ultimately, whatever we decide to do, if we decide to request an increase, would have to go to the town manager, who would then present it to the town council for their approval. That's the process.
I am embarrassed. How much do we get? Man, we do this job for free, so that's.
I can tell you. $800 each, and the chair gets $1,000.
You get $1,000?
Wow.
That's not many.
Yeah, but you were.
I know, it's $800. Funny.
And I did go back in munis to $1,005, I believe, and it has been the same.
Yeah.
Just to.
So it's, I mean.
And what's the town council getting?
Town council gets $5,500. The vice president gets $6,500, and the president gets $7,500.
Oh, is that how it broke out? I heard the total, but I didn't get the whole thing.
They get, the town council members get $5,500. The vice president gets $6,500. The president gets $7,500. Now, my thought, our thoughts are, since we're entering budget season, that this is, if we're going to address it, now's the time to do it, so that we become effective next July, July 1st. I'm not looking to go backwards, I'm not looking to do.
Like a retro.
Retro. I'm just, you know, whatever the will of the committee is.
I, you know, I'd like some guidelines. So, what I'm saying is, how hard is it, Mr. Smith, if you'll take cannabis, some other co-collaborative.
Well, we actually, we did.
Oh, you did?
We did some research.
Wow.
Lubbock gets $3,000.
You're kidding me?
No. Agawam gets five.
No, Westfield.
Westfield gets five, Agawam gets four.
$5,000.
$5,000.
Lubbock's the same size as this, are they not? Are small.
Probably the same size.
They get $3,000?
I think it's, West Springfield is $4,000.
West Springfield is $4,000.
I would take the minimum wage, I won't even be worried about what we do. I think we can do it pretty well.
Well, here's, I mean, our duties have expanded. I mean, this is not one of these where we show up every other week for a meeting and just go through an agenda and approve it. I mean, we do a tremendous amount of work that's not shown on camera. We're all assigned to subcommittees that meet at various times of the years, plus all our other duties of, you know, just things, you know, coming in and signing the warrant. I mean, everybody's, everybody's busy, and everybody's taking time out just to make sure that everything is done properly. And we do a good job of that, and I'm just saying, in my mind, I believe that our duties in my time have expanded tremendously. But again, I mean, if everybody's comfortable where it is, then we leave it that way for another year, and we can come back and revisit it, or whatever the will of the committee is.
I don't know, sometimes I feel like you break even. I think almost, it costs you money to do.
To volunteer your time.
I'm not trying to sign petty, but it's like, if you take a day off to go do something, it costs you money. Or if you go to one event, you know, it's.
We go to all events.
We actually, we actually lost money, though. Because I bet I'm just no longer.
I was going to mention, there is that.
We have lost money.
There is that, yeah.
There is that.
So there, I mean, there is that, that option that was offered, everybody.
Yeah.
Up until a couple of years ago. And I understand where, you know.
Well, I'd like to fold this into our budget process that we're doing with the superintendent. And I mean, I'm looking at Lubbock, $3,000, I think we're very comparable to that. Same size school, same type of organization, same type of central office, et cetera, so, you know, maybe that's a stipend to look at.
What about chair? I mean, because the chair does have.
Right.
Different responsibilities. And, I mean, we all take turns, so it all, it all evens out. So, I mean.
I'll be honest, I've never, I've never done chair, because just the whole logistics of it. You know what I mean? It is, it can be.
Oh, it's a lot.
It's a lot more time consuming.
It really is. And it's not like you don't want to, it's just, you can't.
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
No, I just, you know, I mean.
There was a difference.
But we could put like a $500, like, you know, just do it.
Well, you could do another $500, yeah.
Incred.
So, I mean, it, I did mention it to the town council president that this was on our agenda. He said, "All right." He seemed, he was okay with it.
But I think it's within reason now, and when the government has changed a little bit, and there are less boards now, less executive boards, there's only two executive boards now, and that the council has recognized that there is time involved, and it's not about making money by any stretch, and this is going to make any of us rich, but they've come to a realization that their time is worth something, and so they've come up with a number. I don't think school committee is quite as much work as council, but it might actually be when council settles down a little bit. I know it's a lot now, but they're going to meet twice a month as we do. So, yeah, I think this is the time, and it's certainly within reason to ask at this point. You know, I've been on as long as you, Bill, but it hasn't changed as long as I've been here as well.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we're, I think we're talking the right, right number. We're not asking, we're asking for the lowest of the group, like.
I mean, I, I'd have to look into, they could counter it by saying, you know, "We think, you know, $2,000 and $2,500, maybe more along the lines." Who's "they"? The council. Because they ultimately have to approve this, or they could.
I was just going to mention that my understanding is that the stipend is its own Department 399, whereas the school is Department 300.
It's also school committee line item.
Yes. So, they would vote on just the stipend first, and then the school department budget, just to be clear.
Well, as we do administer it, I think we come up with a rationale and an explanation of why we feel the.
I think, you know, I think everything that's been said tonight is the rationale.
Well, it would do so to a position paper, and with some statements of why we feel that.
Well, and I go back to the comparison to the council, and I think once the council settles in, I know they have a lot of work now, but they're setting their pay for the long term. I don't know that that will be much more work than a five-member school committee with a superintendent and assistant superintendent versus a five-member council with a town manager. I think it's similar in time. So, I think, you know, the numbers that we're talking, half, almost half of what the council is making.
I don't, I don't.
I think it's more than reasonable to ask that, and I would be, I'd be a little shocked if they came back and said no to that, especially after they've gone through the process they've got to. Not that I know what they'll do.
Right.
So, yeah, let's do it.
Do we vote on that? Well, we just. I think, or do we, do we need a motion that gives the chair authority to go to the I think, or do we, do we need a motion that gives the chair authority to go to the council?
No, it has to go to the town manager.
Town manager, okay, but not with the dollar amount.
Get submitted during the budget process.
Yeah, I think it's just part of the budget process, but I think we wanted to, I, I think it'd be appropriate to, to mega vote on it and to, and to acknowledge it to the town manager and to the council, that we've taken such a vote, and that we will include it in our budget, and if they have any questions or issues with it, they wanna get back to us, that way, when we, we don't get to the budget process, and all of a sudden, they see it for the first time when they're gonna vote for it, I don't think that would be a good way to know about it. But I think the process would be, it'd be voted on as a line item at the edge, at their budget vote, and so I think it's as simple as that, really, it's not bigger than that.
I think this should be a position paper developed, so that we're not just saying we want this money.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you're right, no, just, yeah, yeah. That's why you pay the chair more, right?
Yeah.
And I'm willing to help to put together something.
Yeah.
We'll discuss it in one of our meetings.
Okay, so we'll bring it back, and, so I think.
Fold it into the budget process.
Yeah.
All right, at this point, I think that we probably should approve the amount that we're gonna request.
I, I want, we could be more. I know, I really think we should take it through first.
All right, then I'll bring it back.
It's a process of your determination.
And I could check with additional districts to get.
All right, then, here's what, here's what I'll do, I'll bring it back.
Obviously, there's no rush, because we're looking to put it into the budget and take effect next year.
Then you know what, we'll bring it back sometime in January.
Budget process, yeah.
And, you know, prior to, you know, when we have to submit the budget.
With the position paper?
With the, with the position. Yeah, we're gonna work on it.
It'll be in the packet.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, seven point five, the update from the election committee.
Well, you're welcome to. Yeah, we, so we have, we still have this committee, it's at our committee working, and as far as the last presidential election, it was clear that there was not any, there was a very smooth inside and outside. Couple of reasons that were mentioned were, one, that there was no school, secondly, there was science prop along those, those, the Handwood Hill and around the edge, saying no parking, and thirdly, was the early voting was thirty-eight percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people.
I was one of the early voters.
Four thousand one hundred ninety-one voted earlier, because the turnout, what did he say, was seventy-eight?
It was almost eighty percent, yeah.
Seventy-eight percent. Highest ever, so, but there was no problem with parking, there was no problem with getting in and out, and I did an scientific survey, we're asking three or four people every hour on the hour. So from schools' point of, point of view, we have done our part about Burchley Park and the, keeping the election there. The second piece is that there, I'm not sure if there was a petition by the Handwood Hill neighbors, am I correct? About the parking problems that are caused by, they listed a number of things. So from a schools' point of view, we've taken care of that petition from our point of view. We are still gonna work with the town, because now it goes back to recreation and their sports, and how they're gonna manage the parking with that around. So we are gonna meet again, we're gonna meet with the, the contact person for the petition, and kind of brainstorm some ideas around what the rec should be doing to make the, that area. I wanna use the word safer, because my understanding is in some games, emergency vehicles cannot get down the street, doesn't scare me, explain that.
I can vouch for Alcrest that they can't get down there.
Yeah, I know, and what it is, they can't get down there, so.
Because those are narrow streets to begin with, you start putting cars on both sides.
So you have people parking on both sides, and almost blocking driveways and such.
So, because like, for example, the, the chief recommended possibly putting up no parking signs, but that would mean is the permanent.
Yeah.
Now, the residents who are asking this.
Right.
Yeah, it's burning on that.
Especially don't wish, we might get, we might get what you wish for, so a lot of discussion has to continue.
Okay.
Going to.
You're right on.
Now, are they gonna offer early voting for every November election?
No, just the state and federal.